Yeah, I guess. Hey, Amy, how are you?
Can anybody hear me? Okay, I figured it out. Thank you.
Where's everybody? Hey, Betsy, I think you want to change your name, even if you're using Maya's computer just because that will confuse people. There you go.
The other thing too is we're trying to, we're trying to work on this. She's gonna upload a new meeting. So you might have to re-reenter. Once she gets going here. Sorry for the delay. Three minutes.
Are you sending, is she sending out a new link?
No. No.
Oh, great.
Just rebooting the owl, that's all.
Okay.
That's what she's trying to work on right now.
No worries.
Jeff Minahan, I see you.
He's hiding.
Hello.
Hello.
There he is.
Oh, there you are.
I got a new lighting and situation on my office, so I never know what's, what it's gonna look like now.
Oh.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy, happy 2021 behind us perhaps.
Although, I don't know, 2022 is looking a little.
Iffy too.
Iffy too.
Unfortunately. All right, we'll wait, we'll wait while we reboot.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, everyone.
Hello, Amy.
You're probably gonna have to put yourself on mute, Amy, because we're getting the reverb from having two, two computers in the, in the council chambers.
How's that? What's that?
Nope.
Nope, 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 nope. Reverb, reverb.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We're not on.
Yeah, up on top.
Can you hear me now? Okay.
Yeah, just keep that computer off.
Yep, yep. We just needed to reboot the owl. Sorry, everybody. No worries. So I believe, Amy, before we start our regular meeting, Tim is going to introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Tim Keller, and I'm the new town manager of South Burwick. One of you I know, the rest of you, I'm aware of, of course, I know Jess and I know, I know Jeff. I want to say hi to Greg. I worked with Greg years ago when he was manager with Demeris Carter, so good to see an old face. I just want to introduce myself and say hi. Let the board know that I don't get involved in the planning board. It's really not my forte. I work for the town council. I'm certainly here to help you and guide you if I can in any way. But I will not regularly attend your meetings. I will not give you references or, you know, I'll help you with any legal procedures that I can through the lawyers, but mostly your reference point is the coenforcement officer and Amy, and then legal counsel. So other than that, if I can help you anyway, certainly ring my phone, call the office, come see me, stop in, say hi, introduce yourself. And I just wanted to come and say hi to the planning board and let you know you do a thankless job. I guess it's a terrible thankless job. But we certainly appreciate all you do for the town. And there's a lot to do, so that's it. I just wanted to come and say hi and introduce myself, get any questions, anything I can help with. That's it. But I'm not, I don't get involved in code issues. I don't get involved in code interpretation. I don't, that's not my job. My job is administration. So that's where I'll be and that's where I'll sit. And that's, you know, if certainly I can help you, I will. And that's what I have to let you know.
Thank you.
Great.
Thanks. Hey, Tim, welcome to South Burwick. We're all incredibly happy you're here. I actually have one quick sort of administrative question for you. We apparently have something set aside in the town budget for, I assume, David, our consultant, but also some amount allocated for, like, time with our town attorney. So I don't know where that is. I mean, if I just look on the budget, will I find it? Or will you, is there a way to get, like, every six months an accounting so we know we're not abusing the amount of time we have with folks? We were sort of, this was mentioned at another meeting prior, and I don't wanna, I want to make sure we don't blow a budget that we have.
Good, good question. I think the answer should be, and what I've done in other places, where you have a budget operational line, is the manager or through coenforcement officer, I'll give him a, an update monthly, and then at his, either him or Amy or somebody at your monthly meeting can give you the budgeted update number that you have each month if you draw down on that what it is the next month. So usually, in some places I've been, I usually gave that information. We can give that to you monthly, and I think that's the best probably way.
Excellent. That sounds great. And let me just say, I think Abby and David and Joe all deserve a raise while I've got your attention. Okay.
Okay, well, as the acting chair for the evening, I'll open our regular meeting if nobody has anything else.
Manley has a question.
Sure.
Yes. So, Tim, we, I had come in and spoke to you and on the Zoom meeting, I'm very concerned that it's not being done legally per the state requirements and in talking with, talking with you, you said that we had to have special notification moments at Zoom meetings and we had to special reasons for having to, could you address that issue?
Sure. So let me read the whole planning board. So Manley came in my office yesterday and he had a concern. And he asked, you know, looked, asked some questions and I weren't 100% sure of, so I did, as I printed out the law, and I looked at your policy. And so, Betsy, you're all set if I address this or?
Yes.
Yep.
So I don't know if you can, did they, can they get this or?
Yeah, I can get it.
Okay. So there's a, what, what happened? So you, everybody knows we're up to date. So there was temporary, temporary legislation which was passed in 20 months of 2020 for, to allow Zoom meetings.
We lost everything.
I think Dave's trying to share a screen.
He's trying to scare, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Everybody still there?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're still there. He's trying to share.
So there was, there was temporary legislation and then the legislature, the state legislature put in for permanent guidelines for Zoom meetings so it could continue at different stages, different levels. So they did pass LD 32 in 2021, which went into effect on June 21st, 2021. So in a nutshell, if you looked at the second, the second part, it says in-person meetings are the default. And that means that basically normally you do your in-person meetings in public. That's what is state law. That's what a public meeting is. It's in public. And it does not allow public bodies to permanently switch to exclusively remote meetings. That means you just can't vote to go to a remote meeting forever. That's the letter of the law. Then the law's very specific. It goes on to talk about under which circumstances the state law, LD 32, allows for remote meetings during a public emergency or other urgency such as a pandemic, snowstorm, or other major weather event. When a member of the body is ill or otherwise has difficulty traveling, snowstorm, and may participate by remote means, or members of a statewide body, that, that doesn't apply. Where public body jurisdiction has geographic features that may slower and be traveled. If you can't get here because of icy roads. And that's really what the criteria says. The other part, it says you're gonna give sufficient notice. There's other stuff in the roll call vote. So what it says is all public meetings, notice the public must be provided in advance in accordance with one MRS 406. However, when conducted remotely, the public notice must include information regarding how the public could participate remotely in a Zoom meeting. And if you're gonna, if you're doing remote, you're gonna do a roll call on any motion or vote. Then it goes on saying, so that's really it in a nutshell. You can take that down now if you want, or you can get a copy of it. So I did consult with not the town attorney, but I consulted with personal, my, I got a friend who's an HR consultant attorney today after I left work and asked about this. And I said, so here's the, the skinny of it. First off, there's no, there's no planning board police. No one's gonna come and drag you away. That doesn't happen. Number two, you can, right now, meeting remotely is certainly an appropriate action because of the omni virus surge. So that's certainly a thing. It just can't go on, so, you know, at some point forever, can't go on till, you can't pass a motion to go on till 2030 by remote meetings. And the only other thing that was recommended was that you should vote at the end of each meeting. If you're gonna have a remote meeting, the next meeting, you should vote that then. So the public has plenty of time to look for a link to find out how to get the agenda. So that's it. That's really, that probably doesn't help you a whole lot. The, the only thing I can tell you is it's not my decision. It's not Joe's decision. It's solely the planning board's decision. It's solely your decision. By motion and vote, I'm not gonna come arrest you, find you. I'm not gonna come do anything. No one else is. The, the danger you risk is if you don't come back, if you never came back to, you know, two years from now, you never came back to a public meeting, someone could file a complaint against you saying that. But at this particular time where there's an omni surge going on, it's certainly, I think, you know, appropriate to meet the way that you're meeting now. And there, you know, are there always alternatives to look at? I know it probably is clear as mud, but that's the best answer I've got. There is a law. If you're gonna do it, you just have to vote to do it and basically say, you know, right now it's because of the omni virus curve.
So you said we have to vote to do it. And how about the specific reasons that, are there supposed to be specific reasons that each person has in order to meet?
And, no, it's, well, one person can remote, one person can be remote.
Yeah.
And they, they can, they don't have to say it's a health reason. They don't, they can just say, I'm not gonna be there tonight. I don't, I'm, I'm remoting in.
For what re, do they have to give a reason?
No, they do not have to give a reason. They do not, they're not required by law to identify they're ill, they're sick. You know, most people would say, I'm, you know, 500 miles away in Tennessee or something. I can't make it. I want to remote in. But if the whole body wants to do a remote meeting, that's by motion and vote. So that the public is very clear that, that's all.
Thank you, Tim.
And.
I, I hope that doesn't, I didn't apologize for you, but it's the best answer I got.
I still got one other follow-up question on that, and that is, so there's supposed to be special advertising every time we do it?
No, regular, just advertise, you just, you gotta do it by motion and vote. That's the, the biggest thing.
And the advertising part, what about that?
Then you advertise in the exact same way you advertise, but, but the purpose of doing it by motion and vote at the, at the previous meeting is it gives the public the opportunity to get better prepared for, you know, an electronic thing, I guess, kind of that kind of thing. So that's kind of the recommendation of why they want you to, they prefer you to make the motion and vote at the earliest convenience to let the public know what you're doing.
Thank you so much, Tim. We really appreciate all your information. It's extremely helpful.
I, you know, I, I understand, you know, it's, it's not perfectly clear, but right now in the whole world, nothing is, so.
So if, the follow-up on it, so if we did it wrong, let's say there's a $2 million project and we approved it, but we didn't do the advertising, right? We didn't follow the legislative, my reading of it is very complicated legislation. Can that be challenged as from an abater, let's say, and brought to court to challenge those votes?
It, it couldn't. Madam Chair, can I expand on that?
Yes. Yes.
I add a little bit to that. So Manley brings up a really good point that I want to make sure that I reiterate to the, to the planning board tonight. So in the state of Maine, mainly, you know, Manley's questions, can we be held liable? Yeah, you can. However, as long as you're acting within the scope of your duties as a planning board member, you're following the bylaws of the board, you're following the laws and the ordinances of the state of Maine and, and the ordinances of the town of South Burwick. And as long as you do it without negligence, knowingly and willfully create negligence, you have sovereign immunity. We will, the town represents you, protects you, Greg knows this. We, we provide lawyers, and you really can't sue the municipality as long as you're doing it within the scope of your duties and you're doing it as best, the best you can. There are always room for mistake. The, the failed error becomes, and the liability to the individuals, a personal, personal liability comes is if you knowingly and willfully negligently, for instance, connive with a public citizen on a permit, have extirpate communication. The planning board chair, Betsy, if you're the chair, and your friend applies for garage permit, you can't come in and twist Joe's arm about passing that permit thinking it's a good deal. That is extirpate communication. Betsy could be held personally liable because she operated outside the scope of the board. Everything you do is by the body of the board. So as long as you stay within the scope of your duties, the laws and ordinances, best you can. So the answer to Manley's question, if you screw something up on advertisement and somebody calls on it, as long as it wasn't negligent, willful, there would probably be no cause for it.
I'm talking about this Zoom meter in particular.
Yeah.
The way I see it, we're not following the law and.
We, we are following it because we're putting it on the agenda.
Yeah.
What, in my opinion, we're not following the law. And if it's, a neighbor was to bring this to court and say it's an illegal vote because we weren't following the law. In your experience, have you ever had anybody sued and won against something like this, expati?
Yes, I, yes, I, I've been in cases where because of illegal or negligent, willful actions, they have, they have levy. They have levy, I want to say, personal claims against the board, but individual board members were held accountable. The end result was in the case, that particular case where a judge found that members that acted outside the scope of their duties of board on a planning board, in the end, there was a, about a $30,000 payout, but the town council voted to cover that anyway. So those things can happen, but again, it has to be willful or negligent. You have to intentionally say, Betsy would have to say, or Greg, the board would have to say, we really don't want to do this right. For, I think, really, in this particular case, everybody's just doing the best they can interpreting the law. I think as long as you make motions and votes and understand you can't go this way, it's not permanent forever. But right now, I did, you know, I spoke to private legal counsel, not town legal counsel. Where you're having the, where we're having the omni curve, absolutely, it's appropriate. But mo, to be safe, make motions and votes. Always act as a body, motion and vote. And, and from my personal experience along with the lawyers, motion and motions and votes by the body protects you completely all the time. And Greg probably knows that better than anybody where he's got, you know, an extensive municipal background.
Well, I, I personally feel that we are doing it wrong. I want to go on record. I don't intend to put my financial future just because someone doesn't want to come into a meeting and my financial savings at risk. And I would so a lot more comfortable with the town's attorney reviewing exactly how we're doing it.
Okay.
I don't believe, because I'm addressing it and telling everybody I feel it is wrong, that my financial future in my house will be on the line, but I feel that everybody else is involved in this, their savings, their home, is going Uh, involved in this, their savings, their home is going to be on the line. And you think that's. Five fetches, not five fetches. Here's a, and a trip, here's a town manager that it, the exact. Same thing, it's different circumstances happen and the neighbor won.
So Madam Vice Chair, here, your judge, I guess, so.
Yes, Tim.
It should be a discussion amongst the board. Um, if you wanna. Get clarification from town's attorney, just by motion and vote, send it and I'll be glad to get an interpretation for you. Of some form or some kind, but again, it's by motion and vote of the body of the planning board, what you wanna do and how you wanna do this.
Thank you, Tim.
Manley, uh, you know, he has a right to his, what he feels, this is all about you guys. This is for you guys to decide, okay? Anything else for me?
I don't believe so. Oh, or Greg actually has a.
Yeah, since we're having this discussion early on, might as well just kind of clear it up. Uh, I'm very familiar, of course, with this particular law and very much satisfied that with the advertising that we're doing now. We're in compliance with, with the particular law. And when I look at the things, I think it's important to understand and, you know. We can all get the relative guidance that we wanna get in the. And the legal interpretations from, uh, uh, you know, pretty Flaherty and Bernstein Shore. They all have these bulletins that come out where we, we get those all from time to time, but I wanna go back and focus on the actual. Wording within the legislation. And, and again, we can talk at the end because if it makes the board happy and satisfies us to go forward, then absolutely we can, we can. Uh, suggest a clarification from the town attorney, but put a different perspective on it. Four oh three B is the law that we're talking about, you know, really at this point in time. And there is a very clear in the, in the beginning of opening paragraph, the expectation. Uh, that the, the members, the public body are supposed to be in person. But then it goes on to quickly state. Uh, uh, that there are four circumstances, but I wanna kind of go back. Because if you go and you look at four oh three B, section two, subsection B. You're, you're gonna notice the words not practical. And you're gonna notice the words may include. And so if you look at those two words, let's explore those for a minute. Because when it says you can only meet in person for those four items, it says. You can meet under these circumstances which may include. When you look at the word may include and you follow that up by looking at those four items. What that means is that is a non-exclusive list. And being, you know, non-exclusive. Um, means they're just that non-exclusive. If the legislature meant for those to be. Exclusive, they would then say you can only meet in these four circumstances. Uh, according to these, the, these four items they, that they talk about. So really what you're left with is the may include is a non-exclusive set of recommendations, which means we can. Come up with something, which now we have to go back and default to the words not practical. And there is no definition of the word not practical within that four oh three B language. Which means, as Tim suggested, not practical is up to the board. And so it's up to the board to determine what's not practical. Personally, you've had a lot of experience with this stuff, not worried in any way, shape or form about personal. Legal liability, understand completely that it can't go on forever. Um, you know, I, I, you know, when it gets to that point, uh, I'm, I'll be continuing to make a motion. Uh, to, to, to have the remote participation, because the, the remote participation policy. Is for us to continue to act as a board, uh, in terms of how we do the voting. So I'm, I'm really not too worried about it and, and I think if we look at the law as drafted right now. You're gonna see a huge amount of ambiguity in there, uh, with the words not practical and uh may include. Two words are gonna come up, non-exclusive and I think, I think we're good for now. I, I'm really not worried about it in any way, uh, shape or form.
Things, but how about the advertising?
So Manley, I, I think that we can come back to this once we officially enter our meeting, but we can let Tim go. Um, thank you so much for your time. And then let me just open the meeting, January fifth. Um, roll call, Greg Zinser.
Here.
Uh, Hershey Herschkop.
Here.
Manley, go. And me, Betsy Randall. We are all here. Oh, who did I miss?
Okay, so this is Ken Conley's first meeting. He's over.
Hi, Ken.
Hi, Ken. I can't see you, but it's nice to meet you.
Where's Ken?
Yeah, I can.
Where's Kenny?
Yeah, we can't. Okay. Well, hi. So we actually have one, two, three, four, five of us here. Yay, it's exciting. Um, did everybody get a chance to review the minutes from twelve fifteen?
I did.
Awesome.
I would make a motion, you approve them.
Awesome to have a second.
I, I wasn't there, so I can't second them.
That's right. Manley, have you had a chance to look at them?
Have I, I'm second down.
What was that?
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a second. So vote, Greg.
Aye.
Uh, Hershey Herschkop.
Stay.
Oh, no, you weren't there. Ten, you weren't there, so you technically abstained as well. Manley.
Yes, I.
Uh, and Betsy Randall, I. So that passes. Thank you, everybody, and. Um, I just, I know that it says later on that we are gonna do organizational items as number three. But if nobody objects, I'd love to push it up to number one, just so we can get it out of the way. Does anybody object?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so we will, does, uh, Hershey? It's fine.
I, I would prefer to also do, I think we have to have our public audience first, but after that, I. Whatever.
Okay.
Somebody objects, we'll wait, I guess.
Okay, we'll, we'll just stick to the agenda as is. Is anybody here from the public that has anything to talk about that is not on the agenda tonight? I don't believe that's a no. Nobody's here, okay. Um, so discussion item number one is the town council memo from December fifteenth. The planning board charge for the medical marijuana registered caregiver, home occupation, performance standards. And I believe I saw that David was gonna come up with something for that for us this week. David, am I correct?
Um, I actually, I do have, I sent an email earlier today, uh, to everyone and. We, uh, at the last meeting, I do have notes, I've, I've already prepared things. Uh, to be put in that, but if there's anything else that the board specifically wanted to add in there. Uh, I can certainly do it. I, I thought that as this was an organizational meeting and we have new board members. I thought that if there was anything on that, that it, it's pretty easy. We discussed it at length. Uh, last meeting, uh, Greg was there, I remember, and he, uh, also agreed that it's fairly easy. So I can do something this week, even send it back to you guys for a quick look over for our next meeting.
Okay, and I thought, I'm just seeing the email now.
Okay, no, 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 that's, that's fine.
I can speak to all of these things. Uh. In the law, it states that we're supposed to have specific advertisement. I walked in here tonight only to find the agenda has been all switched around. So therefore it has not been advertised properly and we're having an illegal.
Okay, I just wanna stop because I do have the agenda in front of me. And we are not changing the, the, um, order in which we're going through, through it. So we are starting with the first discussion item and so.
I'm just, I'm discussing that. Right now, we're having an illegal meeting because it was changed at the last minute. I didn't even get the change. I looked at the email five minutes before I come over here. So we're having things all changed around. We're supposed to be advertising the agenda. We did not advertise it. You can't advertise it with a five minute before the meeting change.
So what exact? Yeah, I'm pretty positive. Amy, could you bring up what date you said, you sent the agenda out?
Just let me, um, throw this out there. The change in the agenda was not an actual physical change. All I did was send out an email to you guys that specifically said there was an oversight on my end. That I actually put the words vice chair and secretary on planning board organization item number one. And it should have only said, it should have only said assigned two thousand twenty-two planning board. Chair due to Bill Straub not being here tonight and not, um, not being on the planning board anymore. That's the only thing that was really, wasn't actually physically changed. It's just that when we go into our discussion for planning board organizational items tonight, we will not be. Um, assigning a vice chair or secretary, and that was on my end. So that oversight, I looked at that today. And I didn't change the agenda anyway. If I had changed the agenda, I would have had to ask the chair. If that was okay, and then I would have had to redo the agenda and send it out. But that wasn't necessarily needed to be done tonight, so we're not actually physically changing the agenda, Manley.
We would substantially change the agenda where. The chair, not the vice chair and the secretary, that's what. Our, the advertising went out as, and now at the last minute, you change it, that, that's what this meeting is basically about.
Change it, it was a mistake.
I don't care what's mistaken or not, what was advertised is not what this meeting is. You, you know.
Yeah.
Manley, I'm not sure what's go, I'm not sure what exactly you're talking about. What, what do you believe was advertised that we're not doing?
It was advertised, it was gonna have the chair voted on, the vice chair voted on. And the secretary voted on. That's what was advertised. Then all of a sudden, you change it at the last minute.
So it wasn't, Manley, I'm sorry, it wasn't all of a sudden. I made the mistake.
I don't, I'm not here to call you. I think. And I'm just telling you that.
Okay, I, I am going to assert my, my position here just for a second because we do have the agenda in front of us. And planning board organizational items, including the chair and vice chair, secretary, whatever needs to be done tonight. Is on the agenda and I did ask to talk about it first so that we could go through each of those things. But you said that you didn't want to do that, so we can get to that on the third item. But we are following the agenda that Amy sent out a week ago that we have all had and we have all had access to. So. Okay, so I'm gonna go back to our discussion item. That is the December fifteenth town council memo, the planning board charge of medical marijuana registered caregivers. And we're not gonna be able to discuss what David sent us because it was just sent today and we haven't had time to review it. But David, are there any points that you would specifically like to make, um, for us to have a clear understanding?
My concern is not just the, uh, the, the voting of office, it's a whole meeting. Because it wasn't advertised. Everybody's insisted on going to these remote meetings. And if you go to the remote meetings, there's specific things that have to be done and they haven't been done.
Okay, Manley, we can, we will entertain a motion later on that, but right now we are focusing our discussion. On the, on the first item in our agenda. And I will happily come back to that when we get, go later into the organizational things. But right now we're talking about December fifteenth. The, um, charge that we got from town council and I'm asking David a question and he can't speak. And I need you to just wait until we get to the organizational part. And I'm happy to do it, but I need to keep some order in the meeting or we're never gonna be able to get to our points. So David, is there anything that you would like to tell us that's important for us to review? We'll review what you sent us over this next week so we can have a further discussion about it next week. But I would love to know if there are any specific points in particular you want us to pay attention to.
No, I did not prepare a report or comments. I have that. As we had a, uh, new members, I didn't want to present.
No problem.
Uh, something and I thought if, um, anybody wanted to have some clarification, they could call me about something. I had the marching orders from the board, so there was nothing in my email. The only thing, um. That I replied to was just to say, oh, I, I, I was thinking the same thing as Amy. When Amy sent the revised agenda, that was all.
No problem. I had opened it, I, I'd like to open it up to the board. Are there any board members that have points of discussion? Hershey?
I just had a quick question for David, um, which would be, uh, you sent us a link to home occupation. And I know we've been looking at that as maybe a basis for what this comes under. And it, it seems to me it maybe does not, and I'm wondering if there's a better alternative then.
The, um, with that, yeah, and, and the, um, sorry, I'm getting a feedback in my head, so. But yes, at the last meeting, Greg had asked that rather, uh, before I sent anything out to the board. Of what my recommendations would be, or when I started putting things together. He asked that I share the links to the home occupation planning board. And I also included the link just in the ordinance, it's everything online. But I just provided those links as requested by Greg, I think it was you, if I'm speaking out of order correctly. So that's, I, I just wanted to make sure that everyone had the information if they wanted to try and catch up before being the. But I didn't wanna put my thoughts in new members' heads.
Okay, thank you. And those were really helpful, actually, and I thank you for the links and thanks Greg for the suggestion. All good.
Yes, Greg.
So thank you, David. I found those to be helpful. I have not really looked at them yet. Uh, what I'm gonna do is I will look at them in, in the context of the charge from. The, the town council, uh, for what they're looking for us to do. And I will draft up my own changes as well and, and talk with the board at a future meeting. Uh, about those with track changes for purposes of just conversation. Um, part of the item that I, I, I didn't see in there, and again, just as a matter of transparency. Uh, we still are gonna have to talk somewhere in here, just as importantly about the definition. Uh, right, so we're gonna wanna just come up with some definitions on registered caregiver home occupation. Uh, and what that might look like here in South Berwick. Uh, and that will make it easier or harder, depending on how you look at it with minor home occupation or major home occupation. So, um, I still don't really see this taking a whole heck of a lot of time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either. We did talk about the, uh, providing, uh, definitions. And so again, I wanted the board to see the definitions. I should have given you the actual definition of home occupation, which is in the. Definition section of the chapter, but, um.
Yeah, so is it fair to say, David, though, that we're gonna have to come up with a separate definition for. Registered caregiver home occupation and where, where would that go in? In the actual, uh, the code?
I would, uh, I would recommend putting it in the actual definition section. Uh, and also referring to it, you know, as defined by in the actual language. Therefore, we only need to change the definition, uh, definition to tweak it, that can be done by the board very easily, um. So that, that's why I'd recommend it, but I refer back, so if the change occurs, you have to look in both places. But that's a double, double check.
It seems very straightforward and a methodical approach to me, so. Um, I, I would recommend for the board, because right now, as far as I'm aware. Uh, we don't have any big business items hanging over us at this point in time. And before we get hit with anything, I would really like to. To see us start and the same thing on the solar, take the next couple of meetings and just try to, try to get this out of the way. Since their agendas seem fairly light.
I agree.
That's a great segue if you wanna move on to the next item, I guess.
Yes, but I just wanna, I just want to make a quick statement, um, Amy, if you could just ensure that it's on our agenda for. Our next meeting. Well, thank you. And the second item, um, is a solar farm moratorium.
Yes, uh, the solar farm moratorium, uh, we have our, the different standards. I took a look at that. Uh, this afternoon. Uh this afternoon, uh actually, um I am working on a uh. Solar uh review project for another municipality and the more I get, the more issues come up. So there are some things that at least uh I would recommend in addition to. Uh the specific uses, you know, screening and uh you know, I've I've been working with the businesses. Additional screening on the applicant's property, not using other people's property. Uh are things that could come up uh with that. So I I do have some suggestions and I was gonna uh. Ask if the board wanted me to again, put some of those thoughts together. Uh but what I would use as the base uh would be the standards for site plan review. And these are the additional standards for the specific uses.
Okay, Hershey?
So hey, David, just one one document before you go too far down that road um that Jack sent out and I read. Um discuss the pros and cons of using conditional use permit as opposed to a site plan review. So could you just make sure you address? Which one? I mean, you might already know which one is better and I just would like to hear from you on on that issue, those two things. Is that cool? Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're probably way ahead of me, so that's cool.
Yes, Greg.
David, uh I also know that the town of Berwick is struggling with this. And I believe they are in process of or have uh an actual ordinance on solar farms. Uh if that's something you could help obtain, not asking you to do anything and if you could send that out and. You know, I'm all for having, you know, a very, very rough draft. Put in front of us that we can then start methodically going through. So I'm just aware of Berwick because I know some folks over there.
Yeah, I've actually been doing a couple of projects for Berwick, so I have no problem giving you that information, sending the link or whatever. So. I'll get that for you. Uh probably I'll send that to you guys tomorrow.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you, David.
No worries.
Any extra discussion on solar farms?
Um I I just wanna note that I believe, sorry, Greg. Sorry, I didn't let Betsy even call on me. Um I'll try to be better. Sorry, chair person.
Oh, no, don't worry about it.
I I think I I noticed on some emails somewhere of the many I've gotten uh that they are going to extend the moratorium one hundred and eighty days. Um otherwise, we're sort of under the gun in the next month to get this done, which I I don't believe we we'll be able to. So are are we assuming that's what's gonna happen? Jeff or Jessica, do you wanna say something? Does that sound right to you guys? I see some nodding. Okay.
Yep.
Yes, that's that's correct. That's on our agenda for the next our next meeting.
Not that I wanna wait until the last day, but you know.
What what's the extension? How many days?
A hundred and eighty day extension.
Okay, that's what that's what I thought. I just wanna make sure. Um but I will, I will have something to you by this time next week uh on on that too. So. You never know what might get pushed where. So I'm gonna prepare. I'm gonna prepare to at least have a draft for you guys.
Well, and to speak to sort of Greg's and Betsy's laying out our agendas, just it it will it it knowing that there's going to be this extension. Gives us, I think, a little room to work on marijuana first and then tackle solar and not feel under the gun about solar for sure. So.
Yes, yes, Manly.
I don't understand what the big deal is about solar farm. Uh we've got people coming in here selling marijuana, setting up these big uh facilities. I don't know that a solar farm hurts anybody. I I really don't get it. Uh it brings in a lot of nice taxable. Taxable money. There is no noise coming from it. The only thing I could think it would possibly be a problem. Is it may look unsightly to a neighbor. Other than that, you haven't got people coming and going. You haven't got children coming into schools. None of these things are happening with this and what we do have from them is a lot of money coming. With with no big issues, the way I see it. I just wanted to go on the record saying that.
And and we'll go into that more, Manly, when we have, when we get into the discussions on what the ordinance actually looks like. Because we have the charge from town council, regardless of our thoughts on it, we have to review it. And come up, come up with a plan as as a board to present to town council. So that is definitely something we will discuss in much further detail a little bit down the road. Um is there anybody else that has something to say about the solar farm ordinance? David, you have your hand up.
Yeah, the the only thing that I wanted to to add was that the the issues that I've really been coming across with solar farms. Is primarily wetland related issues. Um I mean, really. These sites in general, twenty acres is not a massive site. But twenty acres and trying to minimize impact to wetlands and, you know, species and physical uh land and things like that. There are a lot of issues on that. And and again, there's a a project that I've, well, more than one project that I've worked on. Where that was really the defining issue that and and emergency access. So there there are some issues that. I think are, well, we that the board's been tasked with, so.
Thank you, David. Greg?
Yeah, I thank you, Betsy. I agree. I think there are a lot of other ancillary issues that are gonna need to be reviewed as well. Uh you know, you have to not only look at the short term taxable impact, which there may be some, but there are longer term impacts here. As it pertains to the surrounding property values and what that does for resale down the road. It does have impacts on neighborhoods. Uh listening to, you know, a lot of what happened before the moratorium was put in. You know, there's notification procedures that need to be put in place for items such as this. So people are aware of what's going on. I know there's been some conversations about that. I don't know where it is. Uh you know, the big issue is thirty year lifespan. They these things don't last forever. So. Uh there are long term impacts. We shouldn't just look at it purely from a monetary perspective. Economic development, uh you know, looking out for the taxpayers isn't just about receiving. The immediate payment on the taxes as you move forward. Uh because there are a lot of other negative effects on that as well. So I guess I would ask. Uh I I don't disagree with what Hershey said, but if perhaps we can keep this as a standing agenda item, let's deal with the marijuana first, keep a standing item. Cause should we, you know, move along quickly in our meetings with the marijuana? No reason why we couldn't have a little brief conversation about the the solar farm stuff as well and just kind of. Bring everything together and keep it moving.
Great, Amy. So can you just ensure that it is on our agenda next week? Um I oh, I'm I'll let Hershey speak and then Jeff, I'll get to you.
Sorry, I I I just wanna follow that up to say that we are going into a comp plan. And um comp plan is all about sort of the big picture of land use in our town and solar farms, I think, really fits into. Uh this sort of bigger land use issue. So I we can't delay it until then, but I just wanted to be on people's radar that, you know, our comp plan might readdress this and we might have to come back and look at it again then. But in the meantime, we need to act, so.
That's a great, great point, Hershey. Okay, Jeff?
Just just um for part of the clarification, one of my, one of my main sticking points um. Just in general right now is making sure that we're hearing and putting forth um accurate statements. And I believe that. When it comes to solar, uh. The solar arrays up to make uh five megawatts, I believe actually the legislation. Um does not allow uh it to be taxed. So I don't believe it's beneficial to the town. But I I'll I'll look more into that and get that um that LD number. I believe it's LD fourteen thirty. Which states that it's not taxable. Um so it's not a benefit. Um so I just wanna make sure that when we're looking at and saying things in a public arena that we're we're saying it off facts. But I will uh I, like I said, I will get that to you so that we can publish that that if it is truly the fact. Um so that it's for you guys to be able to see and the public to see. So again, thank you for uh looking at the solar moratorium anyway.
Thank you, Jeff. And Amy?
Ken, would you like to say something? You just have to kind of say aloud.
I'm sorry, uh I just wanted to really watch all of you today, but I do have a tiny bit to add just to this. Um. I I manage PZ Airport and we we deal with glare mitigation from some of our our solar. Uh partners over there. So there will be some zones that you'll probably have to look at clearly along your traffic patterns. That will impact glaring during certain times of year that will take some work. We've we've had to do that. Uh different angles of the sun and whatnot will impact driver uh visual. So that there's something will take some work.
Ken, you have joined us at just the right time. I'm so glad. Um if there are no other comments on solar, I'll move on to point three. Um and that's the planning board organizational items. And the first of those is to assign the twenty twenty-two planning board seats. And so if anybody wants a discussion, there can be, but I'll also entertain a motion for a chair.
Want a discussion?
Sure.
Well.
Go ahead, Manly.
I'd like to tell you again what I'm. My concern that it hasn't been advertised, right? And I don't like how this has come off. Now, David, you sent us out a um. An email saying you and Amy had a specific person you want to uh see become the chairman. Why don't you tell us? Who you want to become the chairman?
I'm not aware of that email.
I have not seen it either.
I've got the email. I can show it to you right here. He said, I guess I uh missed uh the email that been going back and forth between you and um. And David and yeah, he would like to have that person become the chairman also. But a lot of you people see me sitting here and don't understand the fire that's in my soul. But I want to tell you, if I'm treated unfairly. I was treated unfairly by the town of Wells. I sued every one of. Every one of the slut men. I sued the. Town manager that went all the way to Supreme Court and you are not treating me fairly in in this meeting in the way it should go. And I'm not kidding.
So Manly, can you, can you uh? Help me understand because I'm not sure what what is really going on right now.
What what?
I'm not sure what's what's how you're feeling.
How I'm feeling is just what I told you. David sent a a letter out. So to me, that means somehow it's been going back and forth. They want this person. Not the other person. So I'm asking David, tell us who it is that he was talking about.
This this letter doesn't say they're talking about it.
Okay, can I will, I I I emailed Amy after this. This is in front. I hope you can see my screen. Because excuse I I. What I sent to Amy is in responses to this. Amy said, good afternoon, attaches to twelve fifteen meeting minutes as well as the updated planning board information list. A small change to the agenda, an overlook on my part. Under discussion, planning board organizational items, the board will be discussing and voting on a position of chair only. The position is to fill Bill's past role and will be for a six month period ending six thirty two thousand twenty-two. In July twenty twenty-two, the vice chair and chair will then be discussed and voted on for a new term. See you all tonight. Everyone was copied on that. And I emailed back and Amy, thanks for our emails. Must have passed in the air. Glad we're on the same page regarding the chair person. And then I was referring to the. The other email that we talked about earlier when I meant at where I shared the links, which everyone was copied on. And I'm sorry, if if I'm getting, if I'm getting riled up, I I make very sure that I am not. Doing any kind of um illegal participation. And so I'll turn it back over to the chair. If you want any comments from me. You can do that. I'll stop sharing my screen unless there's any other accusations.
I um, yep. I do just wanna say, I do just wanna say. That I reading both emails, I can see how the wording just in written text could be taken either way. So I I I just also wanna take a moment to understand that. By reading an email, we have no sense of tone um or anything like that. So I do wanna act us to all. Act in good faith and trust that nobody's doing anything particularly to hurt anybody else. Although I can see and understand your point, Manly. Um but after reading the email, reading the email, I do see how David wrote it. Stating that he was specifically referencing the chair position as being the chair position being the only one we discuss.
That was that was my only intent. And if that was misconstrued by anybody. I just wanted to make sure that my thoughts on what had to happen. That Amy confirmed that in my mind. So I was just basically saying, oh, I agree with you of what had to happen. That is all.
Thank you, David. And I I wanna remind, I wanna I wanna remind you too, Manly, that Amy and David don't vote. So. That is also another thing.
Actually, you say they don't vote, but this is a fact. Everyone knows that I had a problem with you being. Called the co-chair. And the only reason I had a problem was not because of you, because I think very much of you. And I've told people you're a very kind person. I think you would make a tremendous chairman. My problem was this. You never got voted as co-chair. And uh Amy has looked for it. She told me that she never could find where you voted as co-chair. Therefore, you shouldn't be voting on. Chair, we should be voted on chair and we be be voted on co-chair. Which is a big difference and it was advertised one way. And now all of a sudden, the last minute is changed and advertised another way. And uh that's where it's different. Why is David and Amy talking over whether it's going to be? Chair or co-chair or anything? I thought the planning board run the planning board, not people outside of the planning board.
I I was not trying to do anything of the nature. She sent me an amended agenda and I was. Confirming the fact that I'd gotten the amended agenda and. I'm Amy and I do kind uh do email uh usually email, sometimes a phone call related to. Items on the agenda like, hey, I needed X, Y, and Z for the next meeting. Did you get it? That's part of it.
And I do think I I just wanna, oh, hang on one second. I just wanna say as as well that especially as somebody. Who is not as familiar with Robert's rules, although I am trying. And the process that we do rely on Amy and David, who it's their little job twenty-four seven to understand this stuff. To keep us to what we're supposed to be doing and those are minute details that. I don't know if anybody, anybody really would have known exactly what um what positions we're supposed to be voting on. That being said, Manly, can you please just quickly state what you do want us to vote on tonight?
What what I want to do is do things correctly. It was advertised that we was having an executive session and I told. Amy that it was illegal. And because you can't have legally uh executive sessions like that. And then the town man just said it was illegal. We changed it. It's legal. What I want is I want things to be done properly, the way the uh. Way they're supposed to be done, not half hazard. And I think they have been half hazard. And I think it's about time we get our act together. This this development over here uh by the railroad tracks, it all it takes is one neighbor. To file a suit on that and everyone that's been involved in it, if you haven't done right, your personal homes are gonna be at. State because I can guarantee that's probably a four or five million dollar uh. Thing that's going on there and the and the neighbors have a right to sue and this. This uh town man just said that everything happened to him when he was a town man and it wasn't. Uh fifty years ago, it would just happen and all the board members were held liable. So you go home and discuss that with your husbands and wives and whatever and say, hey, by the way. If I'm not doing it right, we're we could be held liable because that's a fact.
Right, well, we certainly are. Mainly the goal is that we do. The the goal is that we do. And if you have something specific to share uh from the ordinance or from. The law that said that specifically states we're not doing it correctly, please bring it to my attention so I can make sure that it is.
This had the the advertising of this.
Can I, can I just jump in here? Cause I I think we can solve this. And also Greg has had his hand up for a long time before me, but I I'm just gonna say, I think we can solve this in that.
I mean, every time, Hershey, it's not right. I've got the floor and I'm talking. So why don't you wait your turn? So why don't you wait your turn? What I, what could be done. Properly is to. Sent this for the next meeting, advertise the way it should and vote on all the offices that we're supposed to be voting on.
Okay. I, I get that. I just want Greg to now speak.
Thank you. Not really sure. What Manly's referring to about the developments, I'm not going to get into lawsuits. You know, I. Can't even count on my hands and toes and legs, how many lawsuits I've been named in. Um, so my question is, I, I, I appreciate the work of, of David and, and. And Amy on, on what they're doing here. And so my first question would be. I am looking at the agenda that was sent to me that clearly says here. Uh, to elect the, the chair, the vice chair and the secretary. I didn't see an amended agenda. This is what I have that is advertised. And, um, I saw an email, David brought up the email. Uh, that said, oh, look, my mistake. Hang on, folks. You don't have to really vote on that. You only have to vote on the chair. That may be true, but that's making the assumption. A current officer doesn't get nominated for the chairmanship position. So it's, 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 it's correct. Uh, because, for example, if I think Betsy. You're the, the acting chair tonight as the vice chair. You may be nominated. It may be seconded and it may be voted on. You would become the chair. We would then have to vote on the chair. So it really is a cascading effect here. I recall from a prior meeting, uh, there was some conversation. On, uh, something to do with the secretary. I think there was Amy, I'm not sure if the board appointed you as the secretary or what's happening there. There may be an issue associated with that. And one of the planning board members technically. Should probably be appointed as the secretary. But let's be honest, the secretarial position, while it's in our bylaws for us as a. Planning board appointed member is nothing short of ceremonial. Uh, so it really doesn't come with any, you know, put me as the secretary. I don't care. I'm not doing anything. Uh, the staff is going to do it and that's my, would be my expectation. So. So whatever animosity exists in the past. I've been doing this for a very long time in my life, uh, with all of the advertising and meetings, public boards. Been doing it for a very long time. I see zero fault in anything, uh, that had happened here. Um. And I'm happy with the way it's advertised. While we technically have to elect the chair because of Bill's retirement. There will be a cascade effect and we will be electing other positions tonight. That's on the agenda and we should be doing that. I don't see an issue with how it was done. If someone is misinterpreting an email. Uh, well, then so be it. I can't help that. Um. And so I, I, I think it's pretty clear. And again, past animosity, I, I, I can't really speak to. Uh, and, 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 and really what's, what's going on here. Personally, um, being familiar with Robert's Rules of Order. Um. You know, it's somewhat easy to get our way through this by making a motion, the second, then calling a vote. Uh, but I'll hand it back to you, Betsy. I've, I've said my piece. I'm happy with the way it was advertised. I don't see any issues being very familiar with every single legal requirement. Regardless, uh, regarding municipal government. So I, I, I'm good with it. I'm ready to vote.
She was voted, uh, as Betsy is the, uh. Secretary. She was voted as a secretary. I voted for as a secretary. She's never been voted as. The vice chair. The vice chair got through and we never appointed anybody. So therefore we got two vote vacancy, the chair and the vice chair. And there's been an extensive search. By Amy and she said that she did not come up. With a vote where we voted Betsy as a vice chair. If I'm wrong, she can tell me.
I will say that I am not offended if we would like to vote in a different vice chair. That is not a problem for me at all. And I am happy to have that vote as well.
Well, following that logic, if we technically don't have a vice chair, then you are appropriately elected as the chair. Or as a secretary, because it would cascade down to you in order to lead a meeting. So again, uh. What's in the past is past. The legal recourse is really nothing. Uh, at this point in time, I can tell you that right now, whether there was a, a, a vice chair or non-election, it doesn't matter at this point. Because we're set to elect chair, vice chair and secretary. So. I see a clear path forward and that would rectify the situation. That would be the first thing a court of law would look at is what did you do to rectify the situation? So. I'm going to make a motion that we appoint, uh, uh, Betsy as the chair for the ensuing year for, uh, the remainder of. What, what, what's the proper, we, we, do we go through the annual election in, in July?
Yes. So what you're, you're, what you're voting on right now is you have a chair until the end of the term, which is June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two. Then, um, from our bylaws, all of the, um. Seats per se get elected then.
Okay.
I second Greg's motion to nominate Betsy as chair.
Uh, with a second, I'll take a vote. Greg, Sinzer?
Aye.
Hershey, Herschkop?
Aye.
Manly Gov?
No.
And Ken, Ken, I can't remember your last name. I'm so sorry.
Conley.
Same for this since I just got to know you guys or I'm fine with you. You've done a great job. Uh, I actually. I'll give you an eye.
Okay, so that is three to one. Oh, do I vote?
Yes, you do.
Sorry. Okay, although I, okay. So that's four ayes, one nay, and I am technically now the chair.
Muzzle tough.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, if we can have clearer wording in the, uh, for the minutes that my motion was. To fill the term vacated by, uh, Bill Straub for, uh, twenty twenty-two until June thirtieth. Now, what does that do, Amy, for the vice, the vice chair's position is now open? Is that a position that we vote on every year as well in June?
Yes. So now we would want to fill that, that position because it's, it's not, you know, nobody's there yet. And then same exact thing will happen in June.
Okay, so I'm going to nominate Hershey for the vice chairmanship, uh, until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Greg.
Your second?
Can I second myself?
Yes, you can.
I second.
With two, I'll take a vote. Greg's answer?
Yes.
Hershey, Herschkop?
Aye.
Manly Gov?
Oh.
And Ken Conley? Hello? Ken, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and, and I'm an I. So that's four yeses, one no. So Hershey, Herschkop is officially elected vice chair.
Thank you so much.
Make sure that motion is clear for the record, please.
Yes, but Betsy, um, we didn't hear Ken. So can you just ask him again?
Yes. Uh, Ken, how do you vote on the motion for Hershey Herschkop to become vice chair of the board?
Aye. Is that thing not working? Aye.
Oh, yeah, we hear you. Yep, thank you. So that's, uh, that's a vote. So that's four to one. For the motion for Hershey Herschkop to become the vice chair of the board, planning board. Is there anything else we need to vote on now?
So, so situation with the secretary, um, one of the reasons that. I sent out that email earlier today is because I went through the bylaws and I spoke with Joe. And in the bylaws, it does state that a secretary shall be elected annually in the month of July by majority vote of the board. The said secretary shall serve for one year and shall be eligible for reelection. And it goes on to explain. Um, the normal procedure for the planning board for many years, I want to say even over fifteen years, we look back. We really haven't had a per se secretary because like Greg had mentioned, a secretary is just. Um, a name only. The secretary doesn't really do anything because you have a staff member who does that and that would be myself. And because I draw up and, um, produce the minutes. And I take care of correspondence between myself, the chair and the board as a whole. Um, it's considered that I am the secretary, but it's not a vote for me to be a secretary. It's just a position that I hold here at the town. Uh, um, offices. So as a board, you guys can decide. Are we going to vote to place one of our board members as a secretary? Or are we going to just pass that by and not vote for one?
I nominate Greg Zinser for secretary.
Do I have a second?
If Greg accepts, I'm happy to second it.
I'm, I don't know how I'm going to keep up with the work, but I, I, I'll give it a try.
So here, hearing two, I'll take a vote. Hershey, Herschkop?
Aye.
Manly Gov?
Aye.
Ken Conley?
Aye.
Greg Zinser?
Aye.
And myself, Betsy Randall, I. So that's five yeses for Greg Zinser to be voted in as a secretary of the planning board.
So can I, can I make a recommend? Well, sure, Amy, go ahead.
Just gonna say, when you have some free time, let me know because I'll pass them in.
So my fir-, my first request would, would be however, because it is ceremonial, ceremonial and a useless position. For a board member to have because we have capable staff. I would ask that we have the ability to look at our bylaws. And make the changes. So I would suggest we just go in and eliminate that unless it's required by charter. Uh, so I think if we can maybe ask Amy and or Joe to take a quick look at that. Let's dispense with that and be done with it and just get it, get it over with.
It'd look great on your resume. I mean.
I will make sure we check the charter and compare it to our bylaws and then decide from there.
That's. And we just dispense with that mess.
Exactly. That's fine, Greg, as long as you have someone as confident as Amy. The problem is. Uh, since I've been on board, there's been a number of different people that's held a position and. Uh, when that happens and the records have to be. Capt, if you read the duties of the secretary, uh, you're responsible for making sure the records are kept properly. Um, so when we don't have someone like her, we need someone to fall in line. Uh, the way that it's been going since Betsy's been in, it's been going just fine, but she's been there. If we had to, um. Had to do something with it.
Yeah, I see that language is really antiquated carryover. That's just never been corrected over the years. I see a lot of that in charters and bylaws and stuff. And that's what really hangs you up as you try to move forward because you have this antiquated language. So I think we should get rid of it. Because really these duties are performed by Amy and whatever her official job title is within the town. And so that really becomes a hiring issue for, uh, the hiring authority to take care of and make sure that the right person is getting in for that. Uh, because that's what the town is looking at in terms of their organizational structure. That that work is being performed by this particular person. We're hanging ourselves up on our own bylaws. Um, and I, I, I think it's something we can easily remedy. Again, unless it's required by charter.
Good. Thank you, Greg. And so Amy, could you add to our agenda next week? Um, that we review if the charter requires a secretary?
I saw, I have just two, two things to let you know. First, to, um. To add to what Manly had said, in the absence of the staff, which is me, and I have been absent from some of these planning board meetings over the last few years. The, um, because we have the recording, everything gets, gets taken care of. So when we talk about the absence of a staff in general. Um, we always have a backup and we always have a backup to that backup. So I want to make sure that that's set. And, um, for you, Betsy, as a chair, I would recommend you ask the board for a vote, a motion and a vote. For that to be put onto the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, I will entertain a motion for us to discuss, well, actually, is it going to be a vote?
You're in it. You should ask for everything. Yes, you should ask for a motion to vote, to put on the agenda that you're going to look into discussing the removal. Of a secretary position from the bylaws.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion. For us to put on the agenda for next week to discuss removing the secretary position from our bylaws.
I defer to Greg. Tis I do. Go for it, Greg. You're muted. Greg, you're muted.
Can't hear you.
Greg, you're muted.
Sorry, a little, little issue going on here that you didn't want to hear. Um. The, uh, I would second that for discussion and my discussion would be, can we take that a step further? And if it really is this simple, uh, and, and, and I'm going to make the assumption that the staff is going to. Follow the chain of command and talk to the town manager, make sure everyone's okay with this. Uh, I see it largely against ceremonial. I think it could be done. And to actually give us an example of. What that would look like. Give us a strike through version to vote on and be done with it. Um, I don't think we need to talk about it and then go back and vote on it. Uh, but maybe we'll learn next week that there's a charter requirement or some other obscure law that requires it. And at that point, we'll just. Move on.
It's my understanding that, um, by going the remote. That, uh, we have to vote on the entire agenda this evening. And then. Go ahead and advertise it properly because we're doing it through the, um. This remote type of meetings.
Yeah, I disagree with that. Uh, that remote meeting law is really meant for the body, the public body to vote. And if the, and if the public body is going to be having a remote meeting or allow. Remote participation by one of the members. Then what we have to do as a board is really just advertise the means by which the public can have access to that meeting. And ensure that it's a two-way Zoom interactive meeting. So we do not need to advertise the agenda in advance. Uh, Amy can assemble the agenda with the chair and advertise that as normal according to the laws. And that doesn't affect how we would interact as a board, we assume.
Well, that's, that was not my understanding of when I spoke to the town manager of how it had to go. But.
Yeah, it, it actually, what Greg actually said is what, how we're doing this. We're doing it, we're doing everything the right way. When it comes to the agenda, I think what you're thinking is if we're going to vote to put this on the agenda, which we just had a motion in the second on. What Greg is saying is, does there, is there a need to have an actual discussion later on, once we get all that paperwork? So. What I think he's trying, maybe you're not understanding is once we, um, find out if the bylaws and the charter allow us to do that. Which is what we will work on this next two weeks. If we have that information, we get it to you guys, you know, all of you, um, within a timely fashion, you can look at it. The public doesn't have to see that. They will see that it's on the agenda because we'll advertise that on the agenda. They don't have to see paperwork.
It's, it's my understanding that we're supposed to vote on every, um. Remote meeting on what we're going to have on it.
We just haven't gotten to that point yet.
Yeah, no, okay, I'm, I'm in complete disagreement, uh, in all honesty, again. Uh, the issue you're going to run into here on remote meetings is not the posting of the agenda. You can post the agenda up until, I think it's a twenty-four hour technical requirement, one day in advance of an actual meeting. As long as we meet that requirement, and we do, because I think I got the agenda on Wednesday. Uh, we'll, we'll be fine. You can have the agenda and Amy and Betsy can set it up and put it out, uh, at, at that date and time. What we do need to do, because I'm going to be re- meeting remotely. Uh, is everything that we will be discussing needs to be put online as part of the agenda. So if we are discussing the bylaws. That needs to be made available to the public as well. So the public needs to have full access to everything that we're talking about. Uh, there can't be, well, that document that I sent you, if the public can't see it. Then we, then we should not be voting on it. And you can't, we can't be putting up any last minute things like, oh, hey, by the way, I found this, let's do that. If the public doesn't have access to it, then that's where we would be running afoul of the law.
Well, I, I don't understand what's the point of advertising if we're not going to tell them what we're going to be meeting on.
Manly, we will be every, every Wednesday when, when it was posted, it's advertised.
Yeah. Everybody, so on Tuesday afternoon, I get, or for the next week, I will get the agenda prepared. Um, Joe will, and I will chat about it. Sometimes I'll talk to David about it. That way then I let the chair see it. She sees it, he sees it, they say, okay. Then we know we have to make sure we have X, Y, and Z for each discussion. Then we know we have to make sure we have X, Y, and Z for each discussion item, or um, if we have a new packet that needs to be delivered to the planning board. Then I take care of that on that day as well. I've been sending to you guys with any type of digital information and material, and then I post it out here. Um, I post it to the website in three different places. Um, then I take any material that's digital, and I post that to the website, because that's what's going to be actually.
And I understand that, but in my hearing of the town manager said we had to vote on. Uh, the individual items that we're going to be putting on the agenda if we're going to be meeting remotely.
No, what he, he actually didn't say the individual items. He said that if um. Next week, or for the next meeting, right now, Greg, Hershey, and Betsy, yourself, and Ken. If you feel you're going to be remote next week, you're going to let them, everybody know. So as a group. Betsy's going to say, can I take a motion to discuss, or a motion to decide who's going to be remote next, the next meeting? That's what he said.
Yeah, I, I, I think that might need clarification and, but I'm open and I'll follow the guidance of whatever is given to us. An in-person meeting is occurring right now. And so the policy states that it allows us, the three that are here via remote. To be here via remote. There doesn't need to be a motion on that. Now, if, if we're told otherwise, fine, we'll do it, whatever. And we'll do it tonight to, to make way for next week, but we don't need to make, we, we, we don't need to be voting on individual items. But a remote meeting or an in-person meeting is already occurring. That remote policy. Is nothing, does nothing more than allow the board members to take part in that meeting. Uh, there doesn't need to be a vote on that. So it already allows us to take part in the meeting and conduct our meetings as long as we're taking votes by role. So we're already in full compliance with everything that's occurring at this point in time. But if town manager would like us to do otherwise, to ensure that we are aware and making a conscious decision. To conduct a remote meeting, that's fine. But again. Unless Manly and Ken are conducting, are here via remote as well. There's no need to do that, because they are in person, I'm choosing remote. And the policy allows me to choose remote. So I, I, I think we're good. I think a lot of this is just being blown out of proportion.
I would like to make a motion that we ask the town council to review our policies exactly how we're doing by the town's. Attorney and give us a legal opinion, uh, that we are in fact meeting our requirements. Under the law.
We, we already did that with our, our remote policy. The town council reviewed our remote policy.
I'm not asking the town council. I'm asking that the town council vote to have the town's attorney review it. There's a lot at stake and nobody seems to realize that. Uh, of your own financial futures and it's not being addressed. You want to sweep it under the rug, because you want to do it remote. Well, fine, you're the ones that's going to have to live with it if it comes back.
We're not remote. You're, the meeting is in person, I'm conduct, I'm, I'm attending via remote. The town council has no authority over our particular policy. We heard that clear from the town manager. If the town has a concern, a legal concern that would prevent us from meeting. Or a current cause harm to come to the town and or its appointed individuals. I would suggest that the council may want to look into that, or the town manager may want to bring forward to us the concern that they have. However, that we've been operating under this for six or seven months at this point in time. I would suggest that uh, if there were a problem, that would have been, I'm hoping that we would have been made aware. And so, you know, I would suggest a- as anything. If the town manager has a concern about us meeting, which we learned he didn't, um, then. Then, then we may want to reconsider. But again, I clearly heard he didn't have a problem with it.
I brought up, I brought up this way back in the beginning, and I believe before you was here. I'm seeing it now. What is our policy? You, you tell me. It needs to be reduced to writing.
It is, it's right here.
And then it needs to be reviewed by the attorney. And. The attorney tells us that we're doing it right.
I can't answer that, Manly, and I, as far as a policy goes for a board. I, I, I guess I would hope that an attorney did review it. I don't know. I don't know what happened during the enactment. Uh, however, I'm, I'm going to tell you, based on the interpretation of the language and the not practical and may include.
Taking a motion that we have that done, you can choose here tonight. To say you don't want to have it done, but it's on record that you chose not to uh, look at it. And I'm making a motion that we have. Asked the town council to have the attorney review it and affirm. That what we're doing is done properly, because I don't think it is.
Yeah, I don't know if I'd make that motion. I would just simply ask at this point. Could, could have a conversation with. Town manager to see if any conversations have occurred in the past.
Okay, so.
Ken just seconded the motion.
Okay, so we have two, so I'll, we'll take a roll call, Hershey Herschkopf. Greg Zinser. Uh, Manly Gov.
Yes, I uh, vote in favor of the motion that it be reviewed by uh, a town's attorney.
Okay, and Ken Conley?
Yes, I, I think review would put it to bed.
Okay, and I, Betsy Randall, I as well. So that's three yeses, two nos. And we'll ask town council to have the attorney review it.
Okay, I'll make sure I have that done.
Great. So we skipped over the second part of the organizational items, the planning board member training workshops for twenty twenty-two. To be determined. Amy, do you have any information on that, on any trainings or workshops?
As yet, we will be doing something, um, the new MS four uh, stormwater. Permit goes in effect June, uh, July first of this year. So between now and then, we will be having to meet with Christie Ravasca. Who we contract out for services. And it'll be a very small uh, type of a training, not really a training, but just an information meeting for you guys that you require to do and then sign off on. Um, the only other thing that we talked about, um, Tim and I. Um, is at some point doing a workshop with the town attorney. And um, kind of just going through the bylaws and the charter, if that's what Joe thinks, you know, what they decided to do, and maybe. Um, you know, spending a half hour, forty-five minutes just chatting about it, so everybody's on the same page as a group. Uh, once we figure that all out, of course, I'll let you all know. And on a completely different um, thing, we have, do have a gentleman who is um, going to be in front of the town council next week on Tuesday. Um, his name, I have it here, is. Brunell Bailey, and he has applied to be an alternate. So we will find that out, the probably middle of next week, how that goes, and he will be sworn in as an alternate going forward after the eleven.
Okay, great. Thank you, Amy. Um. There is nothing left on our agenda. There are no actions current for the application for the John O'Neill eighty Main Street. Um, I'll open it up to member comments.
Just a discussion about how we move forward, you know, at the next meeting to satisfy uh, concerns of, of some of those present. I'm not worried about having a remote meeting, however, uh, I'm willing to make a motion to allow remote participation at our next meeting. Uh, because again, as I understand it, there is an in-person meeting. Uh, and if we can, in the interim, just have that clarification, Amy, from the manager, I'd appreciate it. So I would make that a motion.
I'll second.
Like to amend the motion. I'd like it to say the reason that we're asking for it.
It's not legal to ask people if, if they, what their reason is. It's like the ADA, you can't ask. To make accommodations for people who don't want to do things in person.
It was, it was my understanding that the law states that you have to have a specific reason in order to.
Right, but that doesn't mean you need to tell anybody what it is.
Yeah, that, that was already, that was already addressed, Manly, that we don't have to do that. Um, do I have a second to the amendment? If not, we'll go to the original motion, the main motion. Um, so we have, we have two, two votes, so I'll take a roll. Uh, Greg Zinser.
Yes.
Uh, Hershey Herschkopf.
Yep.
Manly Gov.
Well, he said no.
Oh, 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 okay. Sorry, we couldn't, we couldn't hear. Um, and Kenneth Conley?
Uh, just a personal preference. I think it's easier to communicate face to face, so I'm going to say.
Okay, and I am the final vote, Betsy Randall and I, so that passes. That we can do remote if we need to. Three to two for the planning board for our next meeting.
Just to clarify that, that's for the next meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
And again, it's just doing it to satisfy those in attendance, because what we just did is somewhat counter to our policy already allowing it. So uh, it's. Somewhat hypocritical in our behalf, but uh, I'm hoping that Amy can seek that clarification for us from Tim. Which I'm pretty sure we know where that will come out. I'm concerned that while the motion passed to ask the town council to seek a legal opinion. My question for those is, it, it's somewhat uh, not good practice to just simply say, hey, review it. It really needs to have a specific question associated with what we're asking to be done. You know, you can ask an attorney, is this legal? And the answer could be yes. Uh, i- i- it's not a matter of, of, of feelings or whatever, it's. Is our current practice, I'd like to know from those who made the motion and supported it, what is the question that you're looking to ask? So that the correct information can be conveyed to the uh, attorney. And if so, who will do that? And since the board is approving it, will the board have an opportunity to look at that question? Before it goes over to the attorney to make sure that we're all on board with that correct thing, because there was, it was a non-specific motion just to be looked at.
Um, what I want to look at is that we're doing it legal and we cannot. Uh, be held uh, liable for. Disregarding the law.
So it really sounds to me, Manly, is you have a question more about general liability. So it sounds like there's two questions here. Is it legal and is there a liability?
Not just general liability, it's, are we doing it legal? These laws are here for a reason, and every one of us are supposed to be. Supposed to be following them. And I've got another motion after we get through with that one.
Yeah, we are through with it. I'm just, I'd like to see what question is posed to uh, ultimately really the town manager, because.
Make a motion then, Greg, like I made.
No, Manly, you already made a motion. A question. I'm, I'm hoping to, to get a, a copy of that, like what is the question that we're looking to ask? And I want to see it in writing. I, I just want to see it in writing, so we're all clear moving forward.
What I'm saying to you, if you expect the town council to check with you every time they do something. You make a motion that we ask them to do that, that they send this to you before. They send it to attorney. I think it's ridiculous. We got a good council. They is smart enough. To ask the attorney whether or not this is legal.
I, I do not know if when we sent it, it was reviewed by the town attorney. But mainly, I am happy to be in contact with Mallory and Tim. And discuss with them exactly how they came to approve our policy. If it was reviewed or not.
That's fine, but I've asked the town council, so I would hope, we've got two counselors here tonight. That would be brought up for motion, it would be sent to the town's attorney. Uh, attorneys. Attorneys can come up with any opinion you want. If we put it out to our paid attorney. He comes back with a decision, he's going to make sure that that decision. That he's putting you is correct, because he doesn't want to be sued, and lawyers do get sued. And I've got another motion. And what that motion is, is every one of the town councils. Meeting starts with a pledge allegiance to the flag, and I request that that be put on our agenda. And I make a motion that be, and then all of us go ahead and pled- pledge that allegiance to the flag like we should, being good American citizens.
Do I have a second?
You seconded.
Okay, I'm two, so I'll take a vote, Greg Zinser.
Yes.
Hershey Herschkopf.
No, and I'd like a moment to say why. I am a second-class citizen in the United States of America, and until I have full rights in this country, I am not standing up to pledge allegiance to the United States flag anymore. I usually don't. I have been. Not going to do it. So you can, you can all stand up if you want and pledge, but I won't be doing it.
Hey, Manly Gov.
Yes, I uh, voted in favor of that. I think it's deplorable, anybody that will not.
No, the, the only, the only comments that can be made are of your own vote. Um, Kenneth Conley?
I already, I already said I.
Oh, uh, not for this vote. You seconded it, right? Okay, and, and I'll say I. So that's passed four to one, that we'll do the pledge of allegiance, however. Actually, can I make an amend? How do I go back?
Take another motion.
I'll make a motion to amend that motion. That we will have the pledge of allegiance, however, it's personal preference as, and there will be. No consequences for those who don't.
I, I don't think there are any consequences anyways. I'm not sure. I'm not sure we need to.
I just didn't know, I didn't know.
I have freedom of expression in this country, so I, you know, it's all good.
Okay, we're covered by the constitution.
There you go.
Okay. Okay, um, any other member comments before we wrap this up? This has been a very, very uh, thrilling evening, to say the least. I miss Bill. Um, but you know, I, I'm, I'm feeling.
Good job, good job, Betsy.
Well, thank you, everyone. I'll entertain a motion to close. Manly.
I'll have someone else do it now on.
Oh, okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And a vote, Greg, Zinser, Hershey Herschkopf.
I.
Manly Gov. Uh, Kenneth Conley. And myself, Betsy Randall, I. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Amy. Amy, good job.
Good night, all.
Should I be taking?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, 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 yes. Thank you. I just wanted to look at the bylaws quickly. I appreciate it.
Good night.
Good night.